Okay, we'll call a meeting in order, roll call please.
Joe Meyer.
Here.
Keith Ling.
Here.
Mike Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Rice.
Here.
The microphones are important for the recording. So, we have no citizens input tonight and we'll move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve or anything held for separate discussion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll please.
Keith Ling.
Aye.
Mike Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
It's carried five oh. First thing would be an AADC update from Derek. Derek, thank you for coming. Comfortable there, it's up to you. Maybe it's better to microphone just for recording.
We going in the closed session or what? Okay. Okay. Yeah, um, yeah, thank you again. I'm Derek over with the AADC. So I've, you know, been here a couple of times and appreciate the support in the past. One of the things that, you know, I've been trying to do is just really be a little bit more proactive and, and also I think we've been really cognizant on trying to, to get property that is coming available or can come available to get in the right hands for either future development or, you know, the possibility of developing further. And we feel that there's a couple of parcels that may have some ability to be acquired in the future and would like the council's support on putting into, in place some kind of line of credit or loan agreements where we have the ability to, to go out and work within whatever realm, I guess, you know, Jim or Beth are thinking to, to try and quickly acquire. None of, none of this would be for long-term hold. Our, our intent probably would not even be to acquire it if we didn't have to, but it's simply being able to be at the table, being, uh, helping steer it in the right direction again to continue to try to get development. You know, I think we, we, I presented earlier this year about a developer that had made an offer and just couldn't, couldn't get the people to sell and, and then we came back and just talked about how do we get those people? So this is kind of that next step of there are some things that we think are coming. You know, at some point I'm happy to get into more of a conversation on that at, at the desire of the council, but, uh, you know, that, that's really what, what we're looking for tonight. Jim, Beth, what do you?
Yeah, what we're trying to do here is have the AADC be in a position where they can be a bit nimble when it comes to acquiring property. I reached out to a bank and we're looking to, you know, like secure a line of credit, so to speak, or, you know, a mechanism that the AADC go out and purchase property. The city council will need to be involved. The city attorney Ted Hinker is, you know, working out an agreement because the city is probably going to have to have some kind of, you know, skin of the game or, um, you know, be kind of a co-signer of sorts to this loan document. But, you know, the intent is, the AADC is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and they can go out and, you know, they would be able to secure the land and, you know, be able to purchase it and sell it a lot more nimbly than, you know, what the council, you know, would be able to do. However, the AADC, you know, has about a thousand dollars in the bank, so the loan would be secured with the, with the intent is the loan would be secured with the land and probably would not have any payments until such time as the land was sold to, you know, some future buyer. The intent also would be that, you know, the, the land would be held very, you know, very, would not be held very long. And there have been a couple of big transactions that have taken place in the past with the assistance of the AADC corporation. And one of those was the Water Corporation where the AADC went through and acquired all of the assets. You know, held notes, you know, acquired the water system and then at a certain point in time when everything was done, then they turned everything over to the city, including some of it, some of the debt. The other transaction that was, uh, the city held, um, the note to this land for quite some time and, um, and that was a quick sale from the community school district then over to Luther Manor for them to do their development. So that's what the AADC does is, you know, really handles the, you know, the land transaction.
You know, a case in point, no, who was here? Skate country, guys remember when that came up? And we, I mean, we have done, there was just no way we could move fast enough as a city to do that, you know, with meetings and lead times and closed session and, and things like that. So this isn't unique and we can do some research with other cities to see how they're handling this. Again, this is not, you know, give us your blessing, I want to get your feedback and what you're comfortable with as far as how the AADC would secure credit with the city backing it. Russ, this may be more of your, your alley than ours, but I look at things like that where we just can't move fast enough. We wouldn't be buying buildings where we got lots of liabilities with structural and, you know, abatement and things like that. It'd be land, land is something we could turn over quickly. It, it's again, this, you know, we met last week, just the three of us to talk about this particular parcel and we can't really speak much about it right now, but we're like, well, how are we going to make this happen? Because it's so hard. Sit at the table and go, hey, yeah, how's this sound? Great. Let me get back to you. So just kind of give us your feedback, you know, what you think about this, what you would need from council or sorry, from staff and legal to maybe put a funding mechanism in place for short-term financing for quick sales and turnarounds.
Are you looking for a roundtable kind of discussion on this right now? Yeah.
Now, some of the community would like, oh my God, you're, Bob, were you around when, when Water Corp went? I mean, that was ugly. People were concerned that the AADC in this case, and Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, I was on the outside looking in, but they felt that the AADC had the city's tax money and they were free to do what they want with it. There was no oversight, right? I mean, that was the concern. Gary Patterson's name comes to mind.
I'm sorry, but.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I was on.
When they were tying the bows.
Greg, was that yours? Anyhow, I mean, there was a lot of distrust from council and certainly within the community and, and we're not trying to get ourselves in a position that there's a distrust. So we need to hear some of your concerns and, you know, whatever make this work.
I guess one of the questions I would have is before anything would go forward with the group, have that, would they have to have a meeting and approve? How would the, how would the approval process on that group's purchases go? Because would, would it be that board would have to approve it? I think the other thing then too would be good to let the community know who's on that board. So if they have issues and questions that they could get, you know, direct them to them. But I didn't know, if you want to move fast, I would still think it would need that board's approval to do it, right?
Well, yeah, and I mean, obviously that board would be working, you know, we're not trying to circumvent the open meeting, but that, 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 that committee or that corporation is not bound to open meeting laws.
They're not bound to open meeting laws, but Russ, correct, that board would have to meet to approve the purchase as well as approve the loan.
Yeah, and I don't know if, if like, if, if, if the board or the committee, AADC came across something and we went into a closed session and this, I'm not sure this is how it goes, like, look, this is coming up, give us a price range, right? And you're, you're using council or comfort with this price range for that property, then we got something we can work with. We can work fast, we can, we can work under, you know, in the way you want to do a real estate deal, obviously not. That's one way I envision. Maybe it works. I don't know, Derek, if you think that would be quick enough?
I think, um, one of, one of the reasons that I, I guess, kind of started the conversation with, with Jim and Beth of, you know, what, what avenues do we have to be quick if something comes up? Because, um, sometimes you only get one shot to make sure it gets in the right hands for what the city's looking for. And everybody's opinion of what something should be is sometimes different, but I think what we've talked about and what we've been tasked with is trying to find, either buildable lots or, you know, lots that can be converted for a larger commercial restaurant style, something like that, that is some, some, uh, things that the citizens want. And the two parcels in particular that come to mind, one, I think we would have more time to engage, a lot, lot broader discussion. Uh, one, I think that hit the market and, uh, we need to be ready to make an offer if, if that's truly what one, we wanted to happen. And so it's not, yes, it would be, you know, if, if this gets approved or there's a substantial agreement here on the framework, we would probably call an AADC meeting, set the parameters of what that looks like to where, uh, we get something either in place or it can be put in place to close within 30 days, but we can, you know, have the backing to make an offer with a vote from AADC through email or a quick same-day kind of conference call if needed to, to make an offer on a property if it did hit the active market.
Yeah, from my seat, I, I kind of see like, like, uh, maybe the better way to go with this is to give you a cap and say, you know, I'm, I'm good with this amount and of course go through the proper channels, you know, touch base, but at least, at least you know where things are going that way. And I don't know what that cap is and maybe we would have to have a discussion amongst, uh, everybody to, to figure out that we'll go to this line, but no further.
I think at this point in time, 500,000 would be probably a reasonable cap. Um, I don't think if, if we obviously get some, one thing and we feel like the water's trending on something else, we could, you know, be transparent about that and ask for a temporary increase. Uh, my only, my only question, I guess, on that structure is if we go out and make an offer with the, the knowing that we have a $500,000 kind of backing or support of the council, what, does that leave us enough time to get a line of credit in place or things like that where we could close within 30 to 40? Not have that in place ahead of time. Um, I don't know what further steps the council would need to take on that. So that, that would be my one question to, to that proposal.
We could do that, but we shouldn't be waiting that late. I mean, well, and we, we could do a work session on that. Again, this, we just sat down a couple, we can have going like, you know, we really got a good discussion. Beth, you can maybe talk about the line of credit, but that's a good point. And I don't know if it's, if it's parcel by parcel, like, you know, we go closed session or we talk to individually. Again, I don't want perception to be that this committee has gone rogue. I mean, there'd be some, some oversight from council, but you can't manage every, we do have two council members on committee by the way. There is some oversight there, though it's not.
Would it be different if it were a property inside the city versus something that's bordering the city? Because if it's in the city, if you're, if you're going to do a quick sale, they'll, they'd have to get their zoning and everything lined up before the quick sale can take place, right? So, I mean, we would have control, some, there would be some city control over the property anyway, wouldn't there?
Um, both of these parcels would be in the city. I think, um, I think the thing we're trying to protect against is both of these are in areas that um, have maybe been considered as desirable for development in the past, but again, um, we haven't had as much cooperation from the landowner. And so, um, making sure again, it gets in development-friendly hands versus somebody that wants to leave it status quo for the next 50 years is, um, I think a priority of, of mine as kind of leader of AADC, I guess, is, you know, we, we have, we're locked in here. We got very few parcels we can develop. So how can we be proactive and, and, and when those people are ready to do something, that we're ready. And, um, so I think, I think that's the thing we're trying to prevent, um, is just staying status quo for the next 50 years if it does become available.
One other question I have too is, and this is a long, I saw in the newspaper where City of Dubuque purchased 10 acres from the balls along Pennsylvania because they're, they keep buying properties along there because eventually they're going to make it four lane. But is there, do we have to have consideration to try to get properties for off the sides where, where we butt up against that street?
We left room in Luther Manor. We made sure they were set back far enough, right, Beth? And that's.
Yeah, we, we made sure that, we left.
Or not Luther, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we left a large, um, you know, frontage for, for the future expansion and say, did the same thing with Carver. We have already made.
And FYI, the 10 acres was $365,000. Or, oh, that they sold it, that was what the paper said.
So are you, I mean, can we get a little deeper and talk to the bank and bring things back? Again, what is, what, 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 what's the rails you want us, the guardrails you want in place?
If you're looking for a go, no-go, I say go.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it also. I'm assuming the bank, until we acquire the property, is going to want city on the hook for the line of credit because they're going to want, if, if they loan us money and we don't get the sale, the, the corporation doesn't have any way to pay that back.
Um, right, right. Well, the initial discussions with the bank, they were okay to leave the, the land as the collateral, you know, because the bank could then go ahead and sell the land too.
No, what I'm saying is that the loan has to precede the purchase. So until, if the purchase doesn't go, they have to loan us the money or, or we're saying we're not going to, we're going to have to take the loan out until we buy something, right? Is that what you're saying?
The, the avenue we're taking right here is kind of like a loan pre-approval.
Yeah.
So that, so that we're pre-approved for a certain amount. Really, we're looking at strictly land, um, right now of the initial discussions. And, you know, so that they can, you know, so that when the time came that the land would become available, that they, you'd be able to act quickly to negotiate.
Yeah, as a banker who is not talking to Beth on this, uh, it would be like a guidance line where they approve subject to these terms and conditions or these things being purchased. You fund it, but you know you can go out and actively negotiate within those parameters.
If it's only half million dollars, we, we could probably cover that without a loan, right?
Then you're under the parameters of, um, the city purchasing it and.
Yeah, and then real quick to answer your question, if there was land outside the city, that sale would be contingent on annexation and zoning, right? But we, there are, I mean, nobody would buy it without putting those conditions in, right? I mean.
Yeah.
I would be too. I think right now the strategical part is to get it done. Cause if we don't, somebody else is going to grab it. So I agree a hundred percent.
We, I mean, for all practical purposes, I mean, growth in Asbury has been stagnant for the past five years. We haven't seen any, anything new coming up. So, I mean, this is as part of the AADC for several years, this has been a very frustrating point. By having this ability, uh, I think it does give, does allow the, uh, uh, the board to be able to move much quicker. And again, by not having to go through the uh, format that we are forced to adhere to as a council. Uh, my concern is, uh, is 500,000 with what the price of land is at this point in time, is that enough? Could we look at 750?
Um, the, the, the stuff that we have in mind right now is smaller. It's not large scale. It's not 50, 100 acres. It's, it's larger scale. It's kind of some infill stuff. It's key areas and maybe, uh, already in zoning, but giving way for something, uh, you know, that is more, um, fits within some of the things that we've been talking about are restaurants or, or just things like that. Um, so it's more infill is what we're talking about. I think my goal would be to, you know, hopefully get something done to where we can say we've done something, you know, in the last couple of years that, uh, you know, people can see and then it, it starts to generate more of an interest or when people do have some things that they're looking to engage us a little bit earlier on and it makes this conversation, uh, a little easier and a little bit more, uh, more lead time able to be had with, with you and the council. I think that's the ultimate goal for me on this. Um,
So then we, you know, I don't know, but we'll take this and start getting things on paper. This probably warrants a, maybe a work session, I think, very near future when we have those documents in place and done a little more research, Beth, we can find some other cities that have done this that, you know, councilor residents want to see how they handled it and how that's worked out for them. We could certainly give them some real case scenarios. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, Derek, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to resolution 120 of 2023, resolution approving pay-up number 12 for the Meadows Clubhouse reconstruction project. To be self-explanatory, Jeremy is out of town today.
I'll just maybe just give you a little update. Um, this pay-app is for 110,000, which pretty much, um, wraps up most of the project and with the next item being the certificate of substantial, um, completion, that's when the net with the proving that, um, starts the warranty on, on the building. The final pay-app, by coincidence, came into my office today. So the next meeting, so for all intensive purposes, um, I think the building is now, um, complete as far as like construction.
Yeah, there's still a lot of punch list items, so we'll clean those up, but yeah, it's imminent.
If we have punch list items, do we need to keep some retainage?
There will be retainage if I'm not mistaken, but I.
Retainage, um, and then they'll, but when you approve pay-up number, the final pay-up for the next meeting, then the retainage then goes out. So, but you still have.
If there's significant, there's some nail pops. There's nothing, little things like that. We just haven't, you know, we hit the ground running April 1st.
I guess when I, when I, when I interpreted final payment meaning final including retainage. So I apologize for that.
Well, it would be, but again, if, if we're not comfortable with, with punch list, punch list items and, and they won't, we won't accept final and they'll just have to get it and get it done.
So, so what was the, the, if, if this is the final payment, where do we, what was the final, where?
This is the final payment tonight. The final pay, this is pay-up 12 for 107,000. Um, we're still holding like 10,000, I think it is, after this.
Okay, is there a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve resolution 120 of 2023.
I'll second.
What's the second and final discussion? Roll please.
Keith Ling.
Aye.
Mike Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice. Joe Meyer.
Aye.
So we're going to table the next one then, Beth?
Oh, you can.
We can do this.
We can do this.
Okay. All right. So motion or resolution 121 of 2023 is a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Meadows Clubhouse renovation project.
Before we make a motion on that, uh, one of the questions that I would have is the punch list, what are some of the items on the punch list? And would they be directly affected by warranty issue?
I haven't seen the punch list. I don't know.
Well, the punch list is just minor nail pops and something like the door and the screen. I mean, there's nothing, nothing major. So, I mean, knowing Conlon, I'm not too concerned that they went to the station. You'd be hard pressed to find if you're these things.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. When, when you spoke about the punch list, I thought there was something, something bigger. Okay, that being said then, I make a motion to accept resolution 121 of 2023, resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Meadows Clubhouse. Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll please.
Keith Ling.
Aye.
Mike Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice. Joe Meyer.
Aye.
That approved 5-0, we have no more citizens input. We'll move on. We have GM, P and Z.
Want to talk about the waste treatment facility?
Anything to add on that?
I guess I printed that off. Uh, really in short, what this says is we're somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it was 24 to 2800 population growth before we need a planned expansion. Um, a couple of things to note, we're getting, you know, DNR requires that we remove 85% of the organic loading that comes into our plant at the finished water. Right now Jimmy's running the plant. Um, we're somewhere between 98 and 90%. So kudos to him and Chet. They've really done a great job, especially over the last four, five years of operating this plant and getting maximum efficiency out of it. So, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, so I don't exactly recall what page that is on. If you want to just scroll down, Beth, it's right there. So what you're looking at here are design parameters for that plant. So, um, when you look at ADW, that's average dry weather flow and AWW is average wet weather flow. And then we're maximum wet weather. So the plant technically is designed as a maximum wet weather flow of 1 million gallons per day. Between 2018 and 2022, we did have an exceedance of that, which would have been our daily max during a wet weather situation. And I believe it was like 1.4 million is what we, was our high that we put through that plant. Still treated, still had 95 to 99% removal, um, of organic material. These are design parameters. What, what the DNR from my experience and really from, in talking with Clint at MSA is, even if we got to the point where we were exceeding these, let's say on a regular basis, as long as we're meeting our removal requirements, we kind of get swept under the rug a little bit by the DNR. It's when we start to fall under that 85% removal that we start to see issues where they start mandating, um, improvements or replacements or whatever, expansions, things like that. So always highlights in a, in a reporter eye-catching, but.
Yeah, I just saw we were at 110% of capacity and that kind of.
Yep.
Made me nervous.
And again, that's in a extreme rain event where we already had saturated ground and then got like three or four inches of rain.
Thanks for explaining.
Yep.
So, and, you know, based on the population growth, when are we looking at major renovations or major expenses into the plant? Is it three to five, five to 10? I mean.
So this year we have a major expense that's already been approved. $321,000 for aeration equipment on the oxidation ditch, which really is maintenance. I mean, it's 16, 17 years old, but as far as an expansion to increase our population by 50%, it's not likely that it'll happen before I retire. You know, I, I mean, just given the climate of our, you know, we'd have to add 2,800 in population. Right now, that's not even feasible. So.
Go ahead. When, at what percentage would you think you would start working on it? It, the, the 2,800 would be, then we'd be at 100%. So would we start looking at this at when we get close to 80%? Is that when we should start thinking about it?
I think. Right, I mean, you're, we're taught to expand this plant now, or I mean, we're talking somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars at least, which is probably a 10 to 15-year save. which is probably a ten to fifteen year save. I mean, if you're, if you were gonna save a million bucks a year for it or something, you know what I mean? Which is an obscene amount. Yeah, I would say it. And we've gotta get construction permits approved and all that. Correct, correct.
The only issue, I think the only issue with population might be is if we ended up like piasta with all of those apartment complexes that went up out there, that would increase your population rather rapidly without, but, but it still takes more lots to do it.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're gonna know about two thousand people coming in the city before it's too late, you know?
So, you can, uh, I mean, I remember when we built wastewater treatment plant, and I thought we'd talked about when the, what the growth possibility was, and then also the opportunity because of additional lands that were out there that we could expand in that same footprint, is, am I remembering?
We, we can expand the plant where it sits. We don't need to acquire land to, to, to expand our process. You know, that, that, what we, how we would expand it, and what type of treatment, and what we would do is up for debate. But yeah, as far as the footprint, we won't, we wouldn't need to acquire anymore ground.
And you've explained this to me, we've talked about it, but just remind me, and maybe for councils, benefit is, the D N R doesn't come in and say, go build a new plant. If you've got an operational compliant plant, even though the regulations have changed, you're grand, we're grandfathered in, right? So this plant could very easily sustain the city for ten to twenty years, as long as advantage and maintain properly, setting aside population growth, just, if we're, because fifty percent is a big number.
As long as we're meeting the constraints of our N P D S permit from the D N R, they're not gonna bother us, so to speak.
Won't walk and say, you know what, the regulations are this, you need to go build a new plant. That won't happen.
Nope.
Yeah.
And our, I mean, our permit's good through, I'd have to look at it, but it's good for another, I don't even wanna say five years or something like that.
We just got one, didn't we?
Before they can even pay, before they can even take those steps to add additional uh, requirement.
The bottom line is, good job to you and your staff, and please keep it up, and we won't have to have this conversation.
Yeah, kudos to them, because I, I mean, we, we speak daily about how things are running and stuff, but like I said, Jimmy, who's the, would be newly appointed wastewater department manager, is really a top-notch operator. He, he cares a lot about it, and spends a lot of time doing things, he really doesn't have to, to try to make that process better, so.
You approved the next race for us, thank you.
Yes.
I think that last paragraph says that all the city staff should be commended on their efforts, and I agree with that. Average citizen just don't want any hassle, and you've been taking care of it.
Yep, yep, they do a great job, so, see them out, Ellen.
All right, any other questions for Blaine?
Okay, thanks.
Go back to the, the reports, um, is there a motion to accept?
I have a question about the general manager's report for the golf shop. It said here the brick staining will be completed the first week of August, has that been done?
Done.
Awesome, thank you.
I have one question about the report too. In here, um, Jeremy refers to, assuming the trend continues, there will be a need for increased staffing in the near future. What, what kind of, who or how does that get determined on when they can hire additional staff?
Well, I'll tell you, um, when he's talking staff, he's, he's not, I don't believe, I won't support a full-time person with benefits, but-
He's talking about replacing some of the part-time-
Yeah, wha- what I, what I would envision is, is we get someone with more of a marketing and communication background that would supplement or augment his staff. He, yeah, I, he may have a different vision, but I'm telling you, my vision, there's no way we're putting a full-time person out there with benefits. I mean, that's fifty to seventy thousand dollars, um.
Thank you.
Do he, yeah, do he and Bo have the skills that we need sometimes? No, they're, they're golfers, they're not social media experts, they're not marketing people, they're not finance and things like that, but, um, they're run ragged, don't get me wrong, and that, and we talked about it, and he put in a report, but again, I, I don't think we need it, and I don't think you as a council would support it, he'd have to put up with pretty big numbers. Justify, like, we got the lower level, right? We haven't had a chance to do the same one with that. We wanna get to a point that we can stage it, we can present it, we can market it, it's the middle of the golf season, the whole time. So if we had a person that could do a lot of administrative things and, and things like that, doesn't mean they can't sit at the counter and check people in, right? So, um, we talked about it, again, I don't envision that being a full-time person, I don't envision it, you know, that person would not be sitting around doing nothing while someone was at the front desk. Maybe you'll speak to us. You, you know, and, and please, I probably shouldn't even say this, but if, if, if we would have looked for a administrative marketing person instead of an assistant pro, I don't know that the facility would really suffer that much. Because Bo tries to do so many administrative things that his golf skills really aren't, aren't valuable to a good part of his role. Again, it's just something he's looking at, there's a lot to learn in the next six months, we've never been, we've been lights out for six months, so, um, yeah, we'll see. Again, that's my opinion, I would, there's no way we're putting a full-time person there, yeah. No, you, it's a good question, and that's where I'm at with it, ultimately, it's your decision. Okay, anything else, otherwise, or was there a motion to approve? I don't remember it.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the reports.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we can wrap up here. Bob, you wanna start?
Pass tonight?
Uh, I'm gonna pass.
I don't think, Beth? All right, welcome, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need adjourn, thank you.